And there's a psychiatrist in Lagos. There are also psychiatric nurses all over the custodial centers. And where the provision of these mental health professionals are not available, there's also a collaboration with the nearest psychiatric hospitals or teaching hospitals where the services are provided. So issues of assessment. The psychologists or the mental health professional that is available in a custodial center is part of the reception boards. This is the first point of admission of our inmates into our custodial center. So the responsibility is upon them to note or identify persons who exhibit some behaviors or show signs that may not be normal. So that is the first point of notes at our reception board. And then when such persons are identified, the issues of screening using our tests comes in. And presently, as at the end, we have quarterly reports sent from the various custodial centers. And as at the second quarter, which ended in June, we have evaluated about eight thousand two hundred and forty-six inmates who have mental health challenges. And they are being treated. The treatment ranges from those who have need medical medications. They are placed on medications as provided by the service and as prescribed by the the mental health professionals who are responsible for that. Either the psychiatrists in the service or the hospitals as it may be. Those I don't have, I don't have any records of anyone who is on hospitalization for now. But those who have identified psychotic issues, depression, they are being and and need medication are being managed with such medications as provided even by the pharmacy units. Those who need psychotherapy are being provided with psychotherapy. There are some who have been identified as having used drugs. We have drug screening tests that gives us the information as to the usage of drugs even prior a year. That's twelve months prior to come coming to the correctional facilities. So we have such screening tools that helps us to identify. And those people are placed on either group therapy to help them to overcome some of the challenges that they have. That's what I can say from there.
Oh, you have a comment? Okay, go ahead. When I finish responding, we'll start with Director Legal Services to to she has a question.
Or add to that. Um, like she said, she had mentioned that at the first point of the inmate entering into the custodial center, there is a medical entry form that is done for all kind of illnesses or diseases or past medical history of the person. So that has, that is taken at the point of entry. And for those that are already in the custodial center that may develop a mental health issue, there is always a screening, a periodic screening in the custodial center that is done to check out all those people that already, you know, that may have, you know, elapsed into mental illness. And like our act has stated, we don't accept the vagrant psychotic that may be brought to us. You know, we have the power to refuse mentally severe mental illness that may come to us. And recently, I think early part of the year, we paid the Controller General of Corrections paid a courtesy call with the Director General of N D L E. And during that, there is a collaboration that for drug abuse, substance abuse, since the N D L E has these drugs centers in all the states of the Federation, we can collaborate with them to come in and be, you know, render services to us at our custodial centers. So that's what I want to add. And then there is also the psychiatrists. Association of psychiatrists or psychiatric doctors in some states are very, you know, they 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 take it as a passion or part of their community develop services. They always come into the centers, uh, come into our custodial facilities to render services because some of the facilities, like is mentioned, we we don't have, you know, a psychiatrist that is, you know, in a lot of the facilities. But we make use of the state or the federal teaching hospital psychiatrists that, you know, show passion in coming around to render services. And also sometimes the medical association, Nigerian Medical Association, a lot of them do come in for outreaches. Yes, outreaches, especially during their A G M. They come in for outreaches in most of our custodial facilities. Thank you.
Much, man. Um, I wouldn't, no, we will address that in what's structured. Yes, we, you, yeah, I heard you. Thank you, but we will ask for more. So we want to first call the Director Legal Services to ask a question now. And some other members of the panel will do so.
Thank you very much, Chaperson. Oh, well, mine, I've listened to a bit of what was said, but I don't know specifically for those on death row. You know, because if you're seeing an N M A comes in, that's annually during the A G M. And then from time to time, um, psychologists, psychiatrists trickle into the facilities. Um, I, I, I would note that most of them would be at certain. Do they, is it rotational to all our custodial facilities, their visits? Because these issues are not, um, they could just develop probably because of a little bit of more pressure on the mind over time and it just grew up. And sometimes they don't even, like you're a doctor, they don't, they don't usually present in violence. They may present in withdrawals. So how do you help those on death row? That's my main concern because they are the ones that have a bit more pressure on their minds because they know that, and you know that death row is not like you're on death row today and you'll be executed tomorrow. The trauma of being kept hanging is enough to even cause. Do you have specific times you meet with your inmates on death row? More than, yes, and like I said, yes, thank you very much. A schedule for your visitations for their psychiatric or psychological um, visitations with them, those on death row specifically. That's my own question. Thank you.
Um, a quick observation also from our side visits. First is that there is acute lack of manpower on the medical side, particularly psychiatrists and then psychologists for what we saw. In fact, there are some states that don't even have the regular medical doctor. How much more having a specialized, uh, so that's what we observed, one. And then some of the inmates we observed that have already presented or noticeable mental ailment, like we know, mental ailment starts without even you noticing. It's only in Nigeria that when you ask somebody to see a psychologist or psychiatrist, you know, he has gone cold. Uh, but out there, you will know that things are changing about your cognitive abilities and coordination and all of that and look for that help. But here, what we observed in the field is that most of the people that we saw with mental ailment, it was their fellow inmates that when we see them begin to talk or act in a particular manner or not answer questions or they are withdrawn, we reach out. Their fellow inmates are the ones that we say, uh, no, don't worry, he has a mental issue. Now, when we want to find out what has been happening, virtually all the places, there was nothing happening in terms of treatment. I'm not saying all, I say virtually all, nothing happening in terms of treatment. Some, the in charge will say, yes, we have observed it, but we don't have medical doctor, we don't have, um, medicines. Some they have, they started giving, but after a while, the supply of the medication takes another protracted long time. Because we also observed that your medical supply, one, is not regular. There is no regular timing for how medications are sent, one. And also there's no schedule on ensuring that the medications are supplied on need basis. So it's like the closed envelope system you talked about, sir. Uh, where they just say, oh, we have X, Y, Z medicine, share this to August. Share this to whether what they are looking for is exactly what you are sharing or not. So you get into that place, you see that for mental illness, for example, the medications that came for them may not be sufficient even to carry that person till the next three months, next quarter, when the next supply is coming. But I want to stop here. Um, I know that the key challenge is not that you don't want to do or do not know what to do. It is still about resources. And I'm looking at the possibility, maybe, thank God, we have Nigerian Medical Association here. I don't know if this cannot be part of your social, um, C S R. That the Nigerian Medical Association can be deliberate about this and having a plan and a target to say in each state, this is what we can put into correctional service and demonstrate that, show that practically at the end of the year to say this what we have done. I, the same thing goes to your own team also. Uh, I, uh, maybe, thank God, this only, um, men- mental health. If we're also looking at legal aids or support, we also are looking for search from Nigerian Bar Association. Because most of the times, yes, government must live up to their responsibility, but there may be gaps that before they are able to fill it, some of these institutions can be able to provide effective support. And I know there's a lot of money in some of these institutions. There's a lot of money, yes.
Please, if I could just make a change. Like I was trying to say earlier, our emphasis most times is in the mega cities. I want us to de-escalate our mega cities. Leave Abuja, leave Lagos, leave Potacot. Let's go to those, um, Abakali, Kiz, Yobe. Those ones that don't really have a lot of searchlight on. Because you'll find out that those are the ones that really have the problems because they are not, the 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 searchlight is not there. There's the tendency for it to have the gradual decay.
And if America or Europe can come from medical missions in Nigeria, I'm not sure, it's also difficult for Nigerian Medical Association to take medical missions to the correctional service. Uh, so, and now you can see how much that we win the association. If, as we're here now, we will see a report that said uh, between two thousand and twenty-four, uh, two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four, Nigerian Medical Association have attended to out of the eighty thousand inmates, have been able to deliver medical, um, mission that worked to at least five thousand, six thousand. That will give us something to also appreciate. Thank you very much.
Comment, uh, somebody wants to speak from Zoom. Uh, once we take that comment, then I can ask my own questions. And it's Francis Enoborin, who used to be uh, the Public Relation Officer of the Nigerian Correctional Service. So please, can you allow Mr. Francis Enoborin? I think it's M N I, too. M N I, yes.
Law and Care. Hello? I hope I'm audible enough. All right, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and distinguished participants. I just want to make a quick contribution with respect to the issues of inmates that have mental issues. First, I want us to note that whatever solution we try to come up with to address the issues we have at hand may not work well if we don't work towards the population that we have in our hand. And the inflows, the root, is we have observed over the years that some of the group of, uh, family members, they use custodial centers.
Okay.
Association, I want to appreciate the first Vice President for speaking so well. I, I just want to follow up by appealing that if it is possible for the association to open their doors to custodial centers that have a gap in environment, it will go in, we need to provide the needed, uh, medical support. There, to recommend, to recommend. Those are psychologists. The few we have in our system, they are, I, I can tell you uh, without missing word, that they are being overwhelmed, overstretched. So if we have the space to recruit more psychiatrists and psychologists, it will go a long way to addressing these issues. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Francis Enoborin. Uh, some people clapped for you. Thank you very much, sir. Please clap for him again. M N I, he used to be the Public Relation Officer of the Correctional Service and did host, uh, is he behind the walls for a very long time? And, okay, thank you very much, sir. So I want to ask my questions now. Okay, so the very first question I want to ask is in relation up to people with physical disabilities. And thank you for making reference to that section twenty-three, which is a very subtle, um, reminder about the importance of dealing with persons with disabilities. I'm, I'm aware that the model state correctional service had the more, has a very copious provision regarding this. But even at that, the twenty nineteen act also mentioned it. So my question given, because you gave us an example of how compliant the national headquarters is. So the question would be, have you been able to assess all of your facilities? Not just the offices in terms of the national headquarters, but also your zona commands, your state commands, and more importantly, your correctional centers? In terms of knowing where, you know, what level of compliance? And if there's some modification to be done, at least you know. Even if it means just knowing, and then you can begin to quantify what kinds of money you may need to make that compliance, you know? Because the inmates, where the inmates are actually would be in the correctional centers, not necessarily in the offices. So we want to know to what extent those facilities have that level of compliance. And to, then you can then quantify what kinds of resources you may need to address that. Now I go to the issue of mentally ill persons. I think that Nigeria has one of the best provisions in relation to treatment of mentally ill persons as captured under the section twenty-four. And you can see that section twenty-four is very comprehensive. I am also aware that, I think, if I'm not wrong, maybe on the twenty-second of August, no, twenty-fifth of August, twenty-twenty-two, the then Controller General inaugurated the State Mental Health Review Boards in compliance with section twenty-four. The question is, can you also let the panel know the status of that? Whether the me- the state mental health review boards are functioning? And if they are not, what is the problem? Let us know what challenges you have there or whether there are some needs that needs to be addressed. Now, you did mention the issue of the psychiatrists and the psychologists. Um, and, uh, uh, Dr. Akis, we already had mentioned some of the challenges we saw in the field. So truly, uh, there are challenges. And during the second public hearing, there was a submission you made which reflected the number of staff for each. So we know that this is an area of challenge. So what, um, had been suggested to the Nigerian Medical Association is very important, but I do also recall that in Association of Psychiatrists in Nigeria, as well as the Association of Clinical Psychologists, both the presidents of those two bodies promised that they were going to have a structure in all of the states in terms of regular provision. Now, most state commands do not even have doctors. And I believe in addressing this, there was an attempt to have doctors extend their time, but still that's a challenge. So will it be possible, not just for the N M A, but all of them to be able to? And you know, what's important is to have a regular structure. You can say every Monday or every Saturday, no, and be able to deal with it. And I won't go into that because some of those suggestions have been made. But we can discuss more with all of them and see how should that structure happen and argue, track what is being done. Sir, I'll come back to the correctional service. Do we have lists of all cases of mentally ill? And this, I'm saying, I know that you can come in, you have your designation regarding criminal lunatics and civil lunatics. But there are some that are not part of civil lunatics, that are not part of criminal lunatics. But they are mentally ill and they are also put in places where you have asylum. Now, do can, is it possible that you can bring to the panel what are these is, including those that are already officially designated as civil lunatics or officially designated as criminal lunatics? In the same vein, sir, it may be good if you can present to the panel all of your facilities that have asylum. You know, there are some of your facilities that are designated asylum within them, but there are some that do not have asylum. And many of those ones that don't have asylum, we now have this practice that where the inmates are kept in the same cell with those who are not mentally ill. What's, what's his management? And it is, we also have found that it is not so much of all because we've also seen in a particular facility where all of them were kept in one cell. Maybe on Friday, we can give you the names of those facilities. Now, uh, quickly, I would want to conclude, uh, by, um, I think the major thing that been said, some of the things you said you do, you know, the screening, the, all of those things, you know? And those who are trained, you know, that had one year with the psychiatric hospital, it's not working. Those things you said they are doing, maybe you can send to the panel the report, the returns you are having. And maybe make suggestions as to how do you do proper oversight to see whether there are still some training gap? Uh, some, every psychologist know that with a first degree psychology, you can't operate at that level you're asking them to do. They have no capacity to do that. So what can be done? How do you get that level of psychological competence to help administer psychometric threats and all that? Because you can't give what you don't have. So how do we do this to make it a work? There is an operational guidance note, and that's my last comment. That operational guidance note was developed in conjunction with the correctional service in terms of actually implementing the section twenty-four and to help the, the, the mental health review board. So please, is it possible to revisit it and know the status? Because I don't know whether the C G has signed or not signed. It was supposed to be from the Directorate of Health. Please can, if you can let the panel know and know whether there are things you are doing around that? That would be very helpful. Um, so I think most of the things I said are mainly things that you may probably come back to us about. So I don't know whether I could call the, the, I will call the chair. Yes, you have, you have comments? Okay, so after you, then the chair would address us. But for the other agencies, because we would write formally and then ask for those details in writing. Okay, man.
Thank you very much. I will start with the operational guidelines that, that it came immediately after the second hearing and we looked at it, but I think it's still with the C G for signing. I think, so you will need to check it. And then I want to answer the mental, the, the inmate on death row. Every inmate, they're coming into the custodial center. I must say, when they enter, if you've been into a custodial center, you know how it looks like? When the police will bring to the gate, open the gate and you are at the admission, immediately they lock you and that freedom is gone. Some of them will just start exhibiting a behavior that seems like their head is off. So every inmate is very prone, especially the one on death row and most murder cases even are waiting trials. So but there is what we have in the system that we have a kind of, eh, leaders in the cells. These leaders are trained apart from the staff. These leaders are being talked to, educated that when once they see people that exhibit certain symptoms, it's not just about the vagrant one that will shout or something, but there are some that will just be lethargic. They can't come out, they won't eat, they won't talk to anybody. They exhibit all forms, especially the, 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 the bipolars. So we, we have them, people that look after them, that can come to tell the staff, this is what I'm noticing, this inmate, it's been days, he has not even eaten his food. He has not talked to anybody. So they can now bring him out. Like if you are in a place that lock up to five hundred and one thousand and you are there attending, maybe attending doctor, attending nurses, psychologists, you can't go around all of them, you can't go around all of them. You, we, so we use this kind of people, even the, we, eh, the, 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 the staff that are positioned at various, you know, places in the yard to look out for this type of inmate and bring them out for us to, you know, attend to them. So we have a lot of them. It's a place that when people enter ordinary, even the staff, even the staff when you are, when you are employed for the first even the staff when you are, when you are employed for the first time, and they lock you inside there, you will be like, oh my God, where am I? So it's like, you know, a place that brings some, you know, frightening things to people that are ordinary, not very stable. But we find a way to cope. Though we are not many, but we try our best. And with the help, collaboration, help of others, we are able to cope. Because it's not just giving psychological care. There's a lot of people that need actual treatment. And then the drug, the money. It's a mental illness, it's a chronic illness. It's not malaria that you give one time, eh, dosage, and it goes off. The transportation, the, the logistics to, even when you have the hospital, is a bit far from the yard. The security that you have to, oh, this person IDR, you have to, oh, I want to take him to hospital. He can't even attend the clinics every week. Because there's a logistic in carrying these such prisoner, such inmates to, to hospital. The fueling, the ambulance itself, everything, logistics is not there. So that's how it is, but we are coping and we are managing. We are not like a five-star place, but the little we are, we are managing to give the very best of our, our work ethics into it. Thank you.
The Chairperson, sir, members of the High Table, uh, permit me to stand on the existing protocol. I am Assistant Controller General of Corrections, Mohamed Bashir, in charge of pharmaceutical services. I really want to respond to the issue on drug distribution purchases and whether it is actually, uh, on demand or on areas of priorities. Um, the Permanent Secretary is a medical doctor and is the Chair of this important investigative panel. Will be a mere witness that it is not very easy to take care of health needs of the society, more so of a confined society like the inmates. Sir, the federal government has actually been doing its animal's best to see that it caters for the health needs of the inmates. Money is being appropriated. What is the money enough? No, but actually it is doing its own best within its own budgetary provision. We are grateful to God that today we listen to submission on gender based issue. I would want to take just a particular place. Our monthly, eh, a kind of, eh, provision for drugs for, as at, yesterday, we had eighty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-two inmates in the correctional facilities. Two hundred and fifty-six of them nationwide. Out of this, we had two point, eh, three percent of them that are of female population. And about two months ago, there was a petition to the Controller General of Corrections by an NGO coming through the, uh, uh, this, um, the, there is this law on Freedom of Information Bill, Freedom of Information Bill, that they act, Freedom of Information Act, that they want to know actually what is done in the area of provision of sanitary, eh, facilities for the gender. If I take only one item, the pad, just one item, the pad. We're having about one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five female as of yesterday. We are planning this month to budget for just part of this one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. And at the contractual sum of a pad, we will need about four million naira to buy pad. Because they are all of menstruation, most of them, they are within the cycle of menstruation, reproductive stage. So you need four million. But what is, eh, appropriated to Nigerian Correctional Service is seventy-five million for the whole of this eighty-one thousand inmates. That is why when you go to custodial centers, you find out that when drugs are supplied, and our distribution is usually on quarterly basis, appropriation is on monthly basis. And so when we had a three-months appropriation, we buy drugs and distribute quarterly. So by the time you distribute this drug, hardly will this drug be enough to take care of a custodial facility for complete two or three weeks. So by the time you go after one or two months, you find out that the drugs are not there. Actually, they are not there because they are not enough. And that is why we sought for the intervention. When the ministries asked that we should send a list for the intervention, we made our input, and it's coming to the ministry. It's not actually enough. We are doing our best, the service is doing its best, the ministry is doing its best, but only that the funding is always the issue. And for the mental health, sir, we actually, uh, the service has placed importance and premium on the mental health of the inmates. And that is why the ministry has actually through the board created a unit, a new unit manned by an Assistant Controller General of Corrections, the Psychological Services Unit, that consists of the psychological, eh, the psychologists and the psychiatrists that we have in the service. And they are doing their best. They are planning programs on how to take care of these inmates. And on our own part in the pharmacy, we are buying drugs in conjunction with the psychological, eh, Psychological Services Unit that will take care of this psychology. And we have partnership with this, eh, psychiatric and psychological association. We have the consultant that usually go to about twelve, I mean, designated custodial centers that have a large number of these, uh, cases, jaws and some areas. And we usually make provision for drugs for these places. In the past, when we send these drugs, you find out that they are very expensive. We don't have the manpower down there to take care of these cases. They usually get spared. So through this new, new unit, we are now harmonizing our resources to see how best to take care of this, uh, very important, uh, uh, segment of our society. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for all the contributions. It wasn't meant to be a case of correctional services defending themselves. There are obviously some challenges. And people who can help are here. So I expected that you should be calling, screaming out for help, okay? Rather than trying to put a defense. With two hundred and forty-six correctional centers, I believe, is it two fifty-six? Two-five-six correctional centers and sixty psychologists. And it's not as if these correctional centers are beside themselves. We already know there's a problem. And for this committee going round, we did see, we, we saw the problems. Let me take Delta States. Where, I think out of the six centers, I went to five. And in two or three locations, we saw inmates who had mental health issues. And there's only one psychologist that covers, not just Delta State, but Rivers. When they mentioned the states, I just stood like this because I don't know how that person is coping. So we need help. Psycho, clinical psychologist is here, NMA is here. Beyond ad hoc things, we need more defined collaborative relationships to be able to support in the locations where we do not have a psychologist. So this psychologist in Delta State, I think it takes one, um, center every three, four weeks. So how much counseling can he do or she? When you get to the center and there are about six hundred people in one center, the six hundred people already are potentially mental health, um, victims. So he can only pick the ones that they say, this was, uh, really heavy, we need your attention. So please, we need support from the Medical and Dental Council, eh, Medical and Dental Association. Because you have all the psychiatrists under your umbrella. I know you have the different specialty groups, but we need a harmonization from NMA because you are everywhere in the states. So please come to Macedonia and help us. No, you need to, it's not in Abuja, neither is it in Lagos. I am talking, eh, I just speak Delta States, okay? Because I saw cases, and every one of us here that have gone round at least twenty-eight out of thirty-six states, we know what we saw. There was a young guy in Oguashuku that I had to take time to talk to because he wasn't eating. He had very terrible scabies. And when I engaged him, he, he was actually a final year student or thereabout in the university. And he was thrown in, there is a waiting trial, but a waiting trial that has been there for seven years. And he claims that he's not guilty of what he was thrown in there for. Very intelligent young man. I had to spend time to talk with him, and then handed him over to the leader of the cell. And I told the in charge that I will follow up. So we have quite a number of people like that, that just some sessions of psychotherapy. We help them even regain self-esteem and not do themselves harm while waiting for their trial to come. So please, we need help. I'm also aware that the federal government has approved in this recruitment process that is going on. I know the whole of the senior, um, staff cadet for correctional service is just health workers to tell you of the acuteness of the problem. But please, correctional service, we need to have a very good distribution of this sixty. I honestly didn't believe you'd be up to sixty, but you quoted it and I can't doubt you. But let them not only be centered in Abuja and Lagos. We need them to go out to the fields. Because if you even put two in the states, it will help now. But when it's one that is covering two, three states, where are the others? So please, let your human resources look at the distribution of these psychologists. If all of them are green-neck, they will still practice medicine. Despite the fact that they are administrators, because they were recruited as medical people. So if you're creating one or two days for clinical service, you yourself should be grateful to God that that oath of allegiance you took to practice, you will practice till you drop death. Some of us still practice. Because it's, you're under an oath of service. So don't let us sit in the office and forget our primary responsibility. HRN, please look at that mild distribution of psychologists in service. And to the pharmaceutical companies, we need support for drugs. I keep saying it that it will be very difficult for any government institution to be able to fund their need hundred percent. So that collaboration is necessary. PPP arrangements will help us in terms of public-private partnership. If we can approach companies that can give us drugs as CSR, they do it. They do it. We are not asking for too much, but we need to build bridges. We need our Public Relations Department to help us in the medical department to be able to build bridges. And we also need to es- um, express and show a lot of transparency and accountability when we are supported. Because that is what will encourage the company to come back again to support us. So please, let us reach out and stop sitting down in the offices and saying, eh, government has not provided, therefore we all sit here. We need to reach out. Gloria is a very senior medical doctor. I think we're probably classmates. And so you would have, you have put in close to thirty-three years. You cannot say that you do not know people in the pharmaceutical industry to reach out to. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not here for you to defend yourself. We have issues and we've got to reach out. And we've also got to train our younger people. Because some of you are going to be retiring very soon. So if you don't bring the younger ones up to know how to do networking, to be able to attract support to the institution, when you are retired and you are hearing, because you will hear of what is happening in the institutions, that's not the time to be saying, I wish I did. Do it now. That's what we are saying, do it now. Build the bridge and empower younger people to be able to sustain that bridge that you are building. That way, the society will benefit from it. I think on that note, I'm going to close this session so that we move on to the next. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, our dear Chairperson. Uh, whilst you were, before you started speaking, somebody muted to somebody that you are from that sector. So you speak with optimus knowledge. Thank you, man. All right. The next thing we have is just a summary of proceedings and a last link, and then we have three to... Oh, yeah, the whole people. Okay, good. See, our Chairperson is on top of it. They, you know, the Chairperson did stand down the submissions that were supposed to, that were carried over from yesterday. So please, if they can come now and speak to us, and then we would do the summary, and then we have the vote of thanks. Please, please media, because I've seen some of you go. Before I do the summary, there's something, a very important information I want to give you, so please do not go. So please, sir, who, who will be coming from the works?
Works Department.
Yes, concerning the, um, sewage and, um, the water, I am in charge of, uh, the water and sewage. Yeah, the officer in charge of works will handle that. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, um, my name is Assistant Controller of Corrections, Ali Agapu. My name is Assistant Controller of Corrections, Ali Agapu. I'm the officer in charge of water and sewage, management of water and sewage services in the Nigerian Correctional Service, Leshoyide. I understand yesterday issues were raised with respect to provision of water, availability of water at Bostala Biokuta and the sanitation issues in that facility. Um with respect to the water, first and foremost, I want to say that we, as has been, already been established, we have a huge challenge with respect to management of our water provision and sewage in all our custodial centres for the same reasons as have already been outlined by my most senior officers, um which um are not far from the resources, availability of resources to manage um these services. Um the Controller General of Correction is doing his utmost best. I am sure a lot of you have been seeing him running from one agency to the other. Um trying to secure support to assist the service in managing um some of these services. Uh presently, we are working with Minister of Water Resources. Um they have placed those uh on their budget. They give us some bohos every year depending on how much is allocated to that subhead. We're also um working with um the sanitation and water quality um department of Federal Ministry of Water Resources. We are also having talks with them, we wrote them a communication with respect to the management of sewage provisions in the custodial service, in the custodial centres. And we are waiting response from them with regards to that communication. We also have collaboration with Federal Ministry of um um Environment. Um in the past, they have given us um one or two assistance. We work with the International Committee of the Red Cross. Um um they have assisted us in several of our facilities. They have constructed biogas um and had a Rubik sewage digestion, digestion systems in some of our custodial centres in Kiri, in medium, in Ikuie and in maximum Kiri Kiri. We're also working with United Nations Office on Drugs and um and Crime. They are currently assisting us in renovating the biogas facility at Gombe Custodial Centre. And um um so we are doing our best in reaching out um in terms of getting support to manage our sanitation and provide water in our custodial um um centres. Um it's just that the enormity of the, of the challenges are so much that whatever we are doing um may not really reflect on the general outlook. But then we are actually doing our best to see how we can manage these conditions. In Abiokuta Boster, the, what the boho, I understood that it was reported that the boho was not functional as at the time the committee visited. I don't think that was properly um um reported. The boho actually was working. The challenge they had then was that the, there was a general power failure in the area. And the cost of procuring energy to run the bohos and other um facilities in the custodial, in the buster um was actually responsible for the inadequate supply of water at that point in time. And when we got wind of it, um we contacted the Controller General who directed the principal of the buster to secure support from NGOs to assist in providing solar energy for the running of the bohos. And I can um confidently inform you that that has been done. As we speak, that um facility has a solar-powered boho. So as we speak, that facility has a solar-powered boho and some solar lighting within the um facility. Also, the sewage uh sanit- and sanitation, as at the time the visit was carried out. I've also reliably gathered that the works officer within the facility had carried out some maintenance. Um usually you have blockade, regular blockade in the system because the children would put things inside the system and it would block the system. We also experienced that in the custodial centres. So usually you will have regular maintenance, we open up the system to unblock. And from what he said, uh they had opened up the system within that period to unblock and the place was a bit messy. But I can assure you, I spoke with the principal, I was on phone with her throughout yesterday. And um she said that those things have been addressed. We have also directed, under the instructions of the Controller General, that um the directives of the panel should be implemented to the full. So we are working on that and um we also want the panel to also push our case. Usually when we talk of sewage and water, um most times it is when you have secured the inmates by means of providing adequate facilities to secure them, then you start thinking of um water and sanitation. If you don't have a place to house them and you don't have a secure place to keep them, you can't start thinking of water and sanitation. And so most times the water and sanitation would come as um a second item on priority. So, but then if we have um assistance and advocacy for this to be taken care of, it will go a long way to help us. They also inform us that we have started experimenting with turning our waste, fecal waste into manure. And we have a facility in um called Custodial Centre that is actually converting the feces, the fecal waste into manure. We also have within that same facility, a biogas plant which is um producing gas for cooking within that same facility. And it is an arrangement, a collaborative arrangement with a private entity um who, who are assisting uh in managing our sewage. So if we have collaborated with um efforts in such respect, it will go a long way to address the system. Thank you so much, man.
Well done, but I'm a scientist. So please forward evidence base to the committee of what you have done in Abiokuta and the status of the toilets and water. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairperson. And good afternoon, members of the panel. I am Architect Prince Imoke. I'm the person in charge of Works Nigerian Correctional Service. And I'm happy to be before this panel. I was told yesterday, or I was asked yesterday that the three thousand capacity Custodial Centre Jangusa, that it has been commissioned and why is it that it's not in use? Why is it in full use? Uh first, I want to start by saying that the work partially has been completed. Some of these uh facilities were completed in twenty seventeen, some twenty eighteen, some twenty nineteen. And we're not putting use. So we know automatically that the building would not remain the way it was constructed because it wasn't in use. A lot have happened, some rudance or uh what shall I call it, debris have blocked some of the sewer lines. I think when the committee was sent three months ago to go for an oversight function, for them to move the remaining inmates from the other facility to that place. They came up with some little, little recommendation that has to do with uh the convenience, the grits on the cells and some others. But structurally, structurally, the facility has no issue. But they are just little, little maintenance. And some issues that from the custody area they needed to add, which were not part of the contract having issue. Like including grits for adequate security and all that. Those recommendations have been presented to the management and they are working seriously on it to take care of it. But unfortunately, because of the positivity of funds, some of these issues have not been addressed as at this time. But they are working seriously on it. We also want to talk about the, there is also a female angle wing on that area. The work there has been seventy percent completed. But because of positivity of funds, some of the basic eh items needed to kickstart it has not been constructed. And we believe that when funds are made available, these little, little areas will be taken care of. And I was also asked to bring the statutes of it, maybe at the end of this presentation. And through the approval of the CG's representative, what we have will be presented to the panel. Secondly, I was asked about that of Sulaja. I think that work has some little issue on it. I was meant to understand from the information available to me that it started as a constituency project. It was actually meant to decongest the old Sulaja Custodial Centre. Some facilities has been provided, but the simple truth is that what has been provided, they cannot kickstart that facility because a lot needs to be done. And if funds are provided, the works unit will work assiduously to make sure that those facilities are provided and it is put into use.
Architects, sir. Little, little problems.
Yes, sir.
Little, little problems which stop us from using a three thousand capacity correctional centre from twenty seventeen to now. That's eight years, oh. And we've not been able to solve these little, little problems in eight years. How little are they?
Many from the facilities that has been completed in the main holdings. All the facilities are in good shape. The issues we have is the convenience. Because the actual issue is that they have not even tested it. We recommended that they should be moving this in bits, in bits. You cannot actually guarantee the efficiency of a structure when it is not put into use. It is during use you will know what is lacking, what is not properly put into use.
Excuse me? Excuse me, you are an architect, so you introduce yourself. I didn't introduce you.
Yes, sir.
So to build a house, you will not start with having a proper design. And this is three thousand capacity, it has defined the number of people who are to use that facility. So from your design, you should be able to speak to how many rooms? Let me talk as a layman. You should also be able to speak to how many toilets and bathrooms? You should also speak to the volume of water you will need. The electricity supply, the space for recreation. You cannot have three thousand people in a location and not think of having a clinic. You also will not talk about having a school or vacationer centre. These are things that are basically meant to be in your design. So is that design you are now giving a contractor to build for you? And as an architect who is in charge of works, you will have engineers who are meant to supervise this construction, to know if you're being given the right quality of material. And by the time that job is completed, you are the one to receive on behalf of correctional service and say that this building has been well completed. Oga pay. That's what your role is. So how did you now receive that project? And for eight years have not been able to put it to use? You are saying this when you enter the house, you will start knowing the integrity of the house? That's, you can't even open your mouth to say that.
I'm so sorry.
Your personal house.
I'm so sorry.
Just hold on, your personal house, whether it's two or three-bedroom house. It's only when you moved in, you realise that you cannot live in it. What are you talking about?
May- maybe uh I spoke out of context.
Okay, don't speak out of context, speak within context and as a professional.
I didn't say the structure has an issue. There were recommendations that were made by a committee that visited. And that recommendation based on either the, I think the, the record that was sent to me, they say that the toilets, the handles to the doors are not good. These are minor, minor maintenance that can be taken care of.
For your own good, stop talking. For your own good, stop talking. Because um director, were you part of Kanu? Please, handle of door is not working for eight years, we refuse to use it. You don't know the details. My advice, take a trip again, Nigerian Correctional Service. Please go back to Kanu with your team of engineers. Knowledgeable engineers, if you don't have come to Ministry of, go to Works for them to do a proper evaluation of that location. Because the plan is to have three thousand capacity at least in each geopolitical eh zone. And when we do that, we should reduce the problem of overcrowding. And then we have one that has been completed for eight years. We have refused to put it into use. I'm very sure it's not small, small problems. And so let us face it. So you go back and do a comprehensive evaluation of that place. In short, I would demand that you request Ministry of Works to give you a complete team to go back there and do a proper evaluation. Because it's when you do it, we will now know the depth of why we are not using that location. It's not what you are talking about. It's definitely not what you are talking about. So, and we need to do this ASAP and submit that report to this committee. This is our last public hearing. So we will soon be putting our report together for stakeholders' engagement. And I want that to be part of it. Okay? So please, maximum one month. One month is a lot because that's taking you to September. No, you need to handle this like ASAP. Please let the CG know about it. The same thing with Sulaja. Because let us really know what the problem is. Thank you.
Um Chairperson, maybe if you permit me, I will give a little feedback. Um a little feedback from some of the sites we visited. Uh lastly, let me use the Quara example, we have the Mandela New Elohim. Um Mandela, Mandela. The construction of that place, the design is superb for what we saw. But the construction does not, it looks as if it's a carpenter that supervised the several work. The deck, decking on the buildings, all of them are almost collapsing. Places that they should do normal fit. They just poured what looks like bitumen lightly poured there and they are all completely burnt out and all soaked. Some places you will see that they even have dropped from their original levels. And what we saw in the. And what we saw in the design there is actually what the design should be, but that construction was poorly managed. And even as it was poorly managed, if something is done in its current state, it can be recovered. The cost of recovering there cannot be equivalent to building even one tenth of that. But if we leave it to continue the way it's going, we're going to lose all the construction in that place. Now, we got to also another place, is it Omoaran or? Omoaran and Quara State. It was relatively new building. But the kind, some of the sockets, some of the waste pipes from toilet, from the bathroom were already broken. The walls were already peeling, because the kind of sand that were used in the eh plastering was looking like black sand. You can see a complete difference from the plastering sand, from the blockwork. And we cannot imagine that a public building, because correctional facility is a public building. There are specifications for what you should do in your plumbing. Because the traffic it gets is not the same as a private building. But what we saw there, I wouldn't even use it a my own private house. So there's a problem in the system. I think in terms of design, you are trying, you are getting your designs right. But the construction and the supervision is not being done well, something need to be done about it.
The mother lie in the Loring, although this should not be an excuse, it's about forty-five years old. It was built during Shagari era. Unfortunately, for up to thirty years, it was not in use. So it was just not quite ten years or thereabouts, that inmates were perked to the place. So maybe because of that longevity and lack of usage caused that issue.
From, hold on sir, from what I know about construction, recovering those buildings takes nothing than putting fat on the top of the con, the slabs, so that they stop soaking water. If that is done and done immediately, that building can last for another forty-five years.
We'll report back to CG immediately and something will be done by those groups. Thank you, as for Moana, it's relatively new. We'll still send somebody.
But the construction quality is extremely poor.
We'll send eh, we'll inform CG to send team to the places, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Eh, maybe I have to wear my engineering cap. And also as chairman of the Project Implementation Committee of the Ministry, including supervising projects in the agency, we may need to face you. Hmm? But what you need to learn from this is that your maintenance team need to do a proper supervision of your projects. Whoever a project is awarded to, the quality of what you get depends on your supervising team. Because where a carpenter is brought to site instead of an engineer, you have every right to stop that company from working till they give you the right quality of staff to do that job. But where we sit in headquarters and the job is completed and more sand than cement is used to build a house, then there is going to be a problem. So please, it is very important that your maintenance team supervise all the projects that are going on. And if you don't have enough staff and you write to Ministry of Works, they can second officers to you to make sure that government money is well spent. What consultant Ike is saying here is that leaving those things for seven years, for thirty years, not using them, not rectifying the obvious problems that we are seeing will not help us, it's better we rectify the problems immediately and put them into use. We have structures that we can rectify, use and decongest the existing prisons. And we are choosing to just leave them, you mentioned three in the female one, I've taken note of them. Newman, Katzina and Kefi. Meanwhile, in those locations, we probably have congestion of the existing ones that you are using. So please let us get up and do what needs to be done. This so-called first thing, there is no fund, it's not funded. It's the way we are applying the funds. And we need to apply these funds appropriately. And have people supervise that government gets value for money spent. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, everyone who have spoken, so we have just two agenda items. One is a summary and announcement and the other is a vote of thanks. But before I go into that, I just wanted to say something which underscores the importance of this summary. You will recall that yesterday, which was our first day. After the summary, we also asked if the media wanted to ask some questions to clarify. We did ask for that. Now, one of the publications from the media that was reporting what happened yesterday said, federal government orders evacuation of inmates from Abiyukuta Custodia Centre. For those who were here yesterday, was this ever said? Okay, so I just said that and eh just to show how important it is again to make sure that we carry the import of what is discussed. You may do your recording just to enable Nigerians have the actual facts. So today, we started on the note of eh first from the chair letting us understand that we would like to have everyone seated by before ten, so that we start by ten. We also spoke about the importance of the improvement in the quality and frequency of the media reportage on these issues. The need for the media to take time to clarify issues that are not clear. And the need for the media to ensure that information are not distorted. So that we don't misinform people, but more importantly, as the process of the public hearing is going, we want more people to have a buying into the product, what we're doing. Though we are having both physical and online presentation, but we are relying on the media, not only in terms of the coverage for the public hearing, but also in terms of requesting your support when the report must have been submitted. So that we can have the full implementation. So having said that, we quickly went into discussing the first issue on the agenda, which had to do with women in custody and gender-related matters. It was clear from the statistics that the percentage in terms of representation of women, I think was about two point three percent of the total population and which has been consistent over the years. So consistent in terms of always having the fewer proportion of inmates across various jurisdictions as women. But what was clear was there is a need to ensure that the provisions of section thirty-four of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act is fully implemented. The panel did ask the Nigerian Correctional Service for specific details which alludes or which would allude to the implementation level for each of the sections under section thirty-four. And if there be challenges in addressing these issues, that it should be brought to the attention of the panel. The panel also took note that six facilities were described as separate facilities for women, but only three of those are fully functional. As part of the directive from the panel was that there need to be a mapping of all mixed correctional centres, identifying the key challenges in each of these mixed correctional facilities as it relates to compliance to section thirty-four, even as a temporary measure. So you know what needs to be done before the full compliance of section thirty-four. Additional information that was given eh to the team of the Correctional Service Officers is there is a need to clearly eh give a record as to the administration of pregnancy tests on every female inmate that have come into your custody in the past one year. And the panel advised that you should use that information to compare with the number of inflows into your custodia centres that are females in the past one year and see whether it's the same. So that if there is a gap in terms of full compliance in terms of this pregnancy test, you let us know how that needs to happen. Then we quickly moved to the second issue, which was to discuss eh the issue around death row inmates. And in discussing the death row inmates, it was clearly stated that the management of death row inmates poses a lot of challenges for the Nigerian Correctional Service. Amongst many other things that were mentioned, one particular one relates to the issue concerning the nature of the feeding of the death row inmates, who specifically demands eh higher amount of food and that from practice is known that if that is not provided, it makes eh that facility very, very unmanageable. And therefore, we are looking at if there's a need to have specific course of provision for food for these and other special eh inmates. There were also comments made in relation to the nature of programme that are made available for these inmates. Then specifically section twelve subsection two C was very, very extensively discussed. And eh it was clear that part of the approach to this is not only in terms of looking at the administrative submission of inmates which may be considered under prerogative of mercy, for example, but that Iguehead Council should at its own will and decide to approach either the court in terms of the expression under section twelve eh subsection two C or also through the administrative prerogative of mercy. And in addition, we clearly mentioned that you should get to the panel the list of all of the persons who are in the various custodia centres that are on prerogative, that are on death row. Male, female and the number to the panel. And eh final point around the issue around eh concerning eh death row inmate was to see what's kind of relationship in terms of the parole board process and those who are committed, the prerogative of mercy committee and those who are committed to life, to see whether that could be of additional help. Then quickly, there was a discussion on inmates that have physical disability. Section twenty-three of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act of twenty nineteen was mentioned as having something to say about physical disability. Eh the panel encouraged the Correctional Service to have a list of all its facilities, especially the correctional centres and then other facilities of the correctional service to assess the level of compliers in terms of being amenable to, for the use of the different types of persons who may be suffering from any form of disability. And that is at least to give an idea of what it will take or to make sure that these things are in compliance. Then section twenty-four was discussed under the eh issue around mentally ill persons. Specific directive was mentioned in terms of the protocol and guidelines in terms that we need to now have an update on this and when it will be signed, and if you doesn't want to be signed, why, why so? That the panel would like to have the status report in relation to the mental health review board. And other issues as regards to the discussions around the categorisation, both in terms of the civil lunatics and criminal lunatics and the women on the family. So we again having the statistics regarding all your facilities, where you have asylum for us to have it and to know what the conditions are. And where you have treatment and management of them and the rationale for them, because we have seen that some are in mixed cells with people who are normal, while in some facilities, they are in separated cell. I think that after the discussion around the persons with mental eh disability, there was a specific eh request and plea by the chair to the associations, including the Nigerian Medical Association and other health-based association professionals and to look for a way to develop a very structured support system across the various correctional centres, so that we can at least guarantee that this support is happening. And where the impacts eh and scope of your outreach and work should also be documented so that we can clearly know what has been done and where it has been done. Eh the issue about partnership and reaching out, two pharmaceutical companies were also flagged and the need to ensure that the young eh staff are also taught how to advocate in this regard is also mentioned. Now towards the concluding aspect of the session from the panel today. There were some discussions in relation to eh water sanitation, in relation to works. Eh on the issue regarding water and sanitation, specifically relating to Abiyukuta Posture, the panel requested for empirical evidence showing the status of the work that has been done. In relation to the works programme, the panel had asked for an onsite visit eh which would be in partnership with the Federal Ministry of Works and that we deemed as soon as possible ASAP was the word of the chair, that we need, the panel need to have this report so that we can be able to reflect it in our, in our work. And the final comments coming from this side was the chair has emphasized the importance of proper management of, of resources to have great value for funds. Issue of creativity in terms of use of those resources, issue of maintenance culture, but I do know that that topic is still part of the discussion on Friday. So I think this has been a very brief summary of some of the deliberations that took place. And you would see that the panel chair stressed the fact that going forward, to help the Correctional Service, we need partnership, maybe whole of societies approach, involving also other government agencies, but the more importantly, disabled society and the private sector. With this on that note, that I close my summary and then we'll call Dr Ike Isukotu to give his vote of thanks.
Thank you. Eh, thank you very much eh panel eh chairperson and also panel secretary. On behalf of the independent investigative panel on alleged corruption and other offences against the Nigerian Correctional Service, I would like to express our deepest gratitude to every one of you that has made today's sitting a success. We started since eleven o'clock and we all have been sitting till this time, even without team break. It shows your understanding of the seriousness of the matter and your commitment. I wouldn't want to spend time to begin to name us one by one.
I wouldn't want to spend time to begin to name us one by one. We already have the Lacon here, we have the Nigerian Medical Association, we have the Fida, we have also the Association of, uh, Clinical Psychologists. We have, huh? We have Nigerian Bar Association, we have the D S.
The best in the continent of the world.
Nigerian Correctional Service. For us, your decision and determination to stay and demonstrate this level of commitment is a clear indication that we are heading in the right direction. We want to most sincerely thank you for this second day of the third and last public hearing. And also for the press, we want to thank you for what you have been doing and for what you will do with what we have done today. Uh, one person I will request that you also thank for us is the Honorable Minister of Interior. Why? Because what he is doing with this panel, with the Correctional Service, if it is done in other agencies of government and they yield the way Correctional Services yielding, I am sure the changes we will see in our society will be measurable. So thank you very much for today, tomorrow is another day. And tomorrow, we are starting by ten on the dot. May God bless you for this commitment and sacrifices.
Yeah, if you have questions, if you have questions, if you have questions, ten minutes we can give you, you can tweet. So aside from the media, I think the rest of us can go. So please grab your tea break on your way out. Thank you very much, let's make tomorrow ten for ten AM, thank you.